Anybody ahead? Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for the opportunities that you've presented us in the city of Brownsville, in the surrounding areas. We ask for your guidance and your mercy as much as anything and to give us the wisdom to move forward in the city of Brownsville. And to go and be with each one of us. And I think about two people that we lost in Haywood County in Brownsville last week. Please pray for the family of Miss Sis Turner and Mr. Tom Houghton. Dear Lord, just put your hand on their family and their friends and healing at this time. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. But we stand for the prayer. Is that flag around? My flag is the nation's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Now when we're in full session, we'll go down the agenda. Expeditions, but complete information. Next, first thing on our agenda, an order of business is to approve our minutes by July eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Any questions concerned from the office? No questions. Do I hear a motion to approve? So moved. Do I hear a second? Any questions, corrections? You're done with calls for the vote. All in favor, let it know by the sign of "aye." Those opposed, next. Dennis Keters. Next, we have a form to the Historic Zoning Commission. Reverend Andre Johnson serves as our Parks and Rec Director. Also, this is a reappointment to Historic Zoning. He covers a lot of area, the college area, with the college facility and campus, and is always willing to contribute in his day-to-day operation that he concerns. So at this time, I'd like to hear a favorable motion. Do I hear a motion to approve Mr. Andre Johnson to his reappointment to Historic Zoning? Do I hear a motion? Motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, been moved and passed the second. Any questions, concerns? You're done with calls for the vote. All in favor, let it know by the sign of "aye." Those opposed, next. Performance carries. Next, we have a memorandum of understanding between University of Memphis. Where for those who are in the public do, Mr. Cody Bowles is here. He has some additional handouts. This is the opportunity that we've come about through cooperation with the Delta Regional Authority and the University of Memphis. This is not the first time we've tried to shore up this partnership and to try to bring more capacity to our community. Mr. Bowles, would you come briefly, kind of just give us an overview? Come, go right up to the podium and tell us what it is. If you made the trip, we want to hear it.
Say.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so I'll be brief, but I have to answer any questions as well. We've been working with the Delta Regional Authority for some...
Hit the agreement.
Sorry. There you go. We've been working with the Delta Regional Authority for a little while now about some of the bigger challenges that their whole region is facing. And one of the things that is recurring that we want to make sure that we're addressing is the fact that in order to bring transformation to communities across the region, you need money. And the best way to get money right now is to apply for grants. The university where I work is, we have a whole office that works on grant applications. And so we went to the Delta Regional Authority and we said, we want to help communities across the Delta to get funding for the challenges that they're facing and to grow in the way that mayor and your aldermen and your whole community wants to grow. And so over the next year, we're going to be doing a pilot project with Brownsville along with seven other communities across the Delta and Tennessee, Arkansas, Mississippi to apply for funding, to build the resources to apply for funding, and to get funded is our goal, and to get funded in a way that helps to build capacity for your community so that we can then continue to grow funding opportunities through grants. So that's really what the basic bones of it are. Anything else you want me to add?
No, just this agreement has an out clause to be terminated by either party upon proper notification. What this does is we're going, basically, as we build capacity, we're going to build a grant team. We're going to take people that, department heads, that have people in the department, fire department, Ms. Matthews, Seminole Company, who's had this out, and maybe one or two more. We're going to maximize the opportunity to train our people in-house to build our own grant, writing team, and up our capacity. Is that something?
Yeah, that's it. And there's no cost to you guys to participate in this. The DRA is paying for everything as part of this program. So this is only going to create resources for your community. And hopefully, we'll have a whole bunch of crystals. Crystals, crystals, amazing. And we want to make sure that you have five, 10 crystals in your community so that you can generate all that funding, but you need to do what you need to do.
And the Delta Regional Authority not only have those classes, but they have grant opportunities.
They do as well, yeah.
Well, I'm just like...
Yeah, we'll be looking at DRA funding. We'll also be looking at EDA, USDA, anything that funds the areas that help you to address the challenges that you're facing.
Thank you. This was not, this didn't happen overnight.
A little while.
Yeah, and thank you to the Delta Regional Authority. We have seen a lot of funding, but this helps us to build gateways. Gateways is why we're doing this. And it's a pilot program, one of few communities in the state doing this.
Yeah, there's only two in Tennessee, so Brownsville might as well be the only two that are going to be participating in this. So it's a good opportunity.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowles. All right, at this time, I'd like to hear, entertain the motion. We approve the memorandum of standing between the city of Brownsville and University of Memphis. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Do I hear a second? Been moved and passed the second. All those, any questions, concerns? All right, Price is Right. All in favor, let it know by the sign of "aye." Those opposed, next. Okay, I'm going to use the pass. Next, we have our ordinance number one zero zero four. It's an order to amend the fireworks ordinance located chapter four of the city code regarding discharge and display of fireworks. This has come about trying to find a middle ground for fireworks. We know that they're sold outside the county during the holidays, and they're being discharged on every street in Brownsville. So what we did was, this came from the police department cooperation from Chief Evans in his department to do two things. One is to put some parameters around when these fireworks can be discharged, twice a year, June twenty-seventh to July fourth, the hours from three P M. to ten P M., except for July fourth, where the actual hours are ten to eleven P M. Because these fireworks are loud, and I think we often affect them out. So, and then we have police officers who are trying to enforce this on very difficult law enforcement. So we're going to put some parameters around it. It starts somewhere. Also, December twenty-sixth to January first, permissional hours of the same three P M. to ten P M., except for December thirty-first, where the hours are ten A M. to thirteen, thirty A M., just a little after midnight. Also, a second thing that this ordinance, one zero zero four, does, it has permissional hours for special display, consumer fireworks displayed for special events. And that's from ten A M. to eleven P M., Sunday to Thursday, ten A M. to eleven thirty P M., Friday to Saturday. This will have, we require, and everybody's required to clean up their debris within a twenty-five hour period of display. So what this does, each time there is a public entity or a special event, they'll have to come get a permit. They'll have to get a permit to do this, so we have, we'll know when, we'll know why. When the police department start getting calls about gunfire, we know this is a special event. It's about communications, and it's putting in some parameters, but now, and we can also adjust these parameters as they go forward. This is ordinance number one zero zero four. Do I hear a motion to approve? Then motion. Do I hear a second?
Hey, just go and get it out here to have some discussion on that. I want to hear both sides of that story, so I'll second that one.
All right, questions and concerns? Let's discuss it. Chief Evans, you want to, you want to hear it, Chief Evans?
I love, I love to hear from Chief Evans. I'd also like to hear from Chief Sanders as well, too, because, you know, I know out in the county they allow fireworks, but they're based in pretty close proximity here, so I'm not concerned with so much the law violations as I am the risk to homeowners and what it does to home insurance.
Okay. Chief Evans, you want to come up and just kind of tell us a little? Chief Sanders, you, you know, you go up and come.
So what we've been finding, the problem they're running into with...
So, okay.
So, so one of the problems they're running into with fireworks thing, I mean, we're not going to stop it. I mean, it was thirty years, it's been a thirty-year problem. The original C O, which was set up in nineteen fifty's, it hadn't been revisited. So what's going to happen? These people are going to shoot fireworks regardless. It will give us an opportunity to enforce it with these hours. So if we set hours after eleven P M., ten o'clock, and we catch people like we did the last time, we can issue citation. It'll give us more bite to do our job with. Plus, if a lot of people illegally do it inside the city, which they're going to do it anyway. And the other thing about the special event, it'll give us, like I said, we have something coming up, first game, Haywood Football League, it's a big event, they have fireworks for, I think it's bicentennial year, and that'll require permit, and that would give us the right to have to do permit and allow it to be done, which will be done in a safe manner. They have engineers that already outlined everything we need to do. We looked at it, roadblocks, parking lots, and everything's been taken care of. But the fireworks thing has been something that's been going on for a long time, and we had to revisit that city ordinance on it. If you check the city ordinance and surrounding cities, it's pretty much the same thing. We're the only one that hadn't went back and changed the city ordinance. One of the stipulations in it, you know, the fire department issued anything for us dry, a drop, fail, you know, and we can enforce that, too. That's the main thing we worry about. I think forest fires, and I can, I can let the chief talk about that, I don't recall any type of damage or anything that was caused this past year with the fireworks. Most of them doing it in a safe manner. The most careless fireworks we've had in the Berrywood area, where these guys taking these mortar rounds and shooting at each other, that's where the injuries come in at, but most of our adults been responsible. We spend most of our time really chasing kids and fireworks during the fireworks season. But I understand that the liability to part of, you know, fires and damage to property. We didn't have much this year. We didn't have much. We didn't have anything catching a family or field. I think we had to leave their grass fire, too. But that, that would give us a little bit on the law enforcement, law enforcement side, and we can do something about it. The way the law is now, it's just...
It's illegal right now, right?
Just illegal, for people to do it anyway.
So whether or not you give them, take it with you, it's basically the same, I guess, where you got a family of five, or three, four families having family gathering and shooting fireworks in a nice, safe, clean environment. You know, but the difference, I guess, is that recklessness and that whole...
Exactly.
Situation. So for instance, if you got people, he says, she says, he shot a firework at somebody, can you, I mean, is that a crime?
I mean, you know, if I take a mortar round and shoot at somebody, it's pretty much taking a fire on for a weapon to shoot them. So if you think, well, back two years ago, we had a guy in the neighborhood, one kid threw the mortar round, shot him in the house, and he could hit. And these are the fireworks that sound like cannon, bombs.
Yeah.
And they're killers.
Did you catch you, did?
I don't remember in that case, but it turned into a foot chase when we doing, we doing the neighborhood, this kid scattered in the water. We didn't catch him, we charged him.
Yeah, that's a crime, right? I mean, it's a judge's property.
And it can be aggravated assault, straight to the property and all that. So we have to have some kind of bite or grit, and we can actually do our job with the city ordinance backing us on it. If we have these hours set, we can enforce them after these hours.
Well, sentences and parameters.
Exactly.
Something that's already going on. Okay. Chief Sanders, you have anything on that?
Uh, I definitely like the idea of timeline. Again, you cannot use them, because I know that my house, a week before, July fourth, until the two weeks after, that would be here every night. So as far as bike concern, we didn't answer many calls, had a couple of small grass fires, a couple of fireworks. I don't think we had anything major this year, but we have had a few in the past, I mean, roofs, landing on a couple of people's roofs, catching a roof on fire. So we have had issues with it. So I definitely would like to see something to rein them in a little bit, but this does get out of control.
Do you think that will help? Well, do you think setting those parameters on that will help, or do you think it'd be just more during those hours and likely to, and I love fireworks. Do you think I might celebrate, I love to look at them, but I kind of get concerned sometimes of everybody's...
I mean, usually around the fourth, everything is grinded up enough that we don't have a big issue with fire starting.
Yeah.
The fourth, I mean, the first, you know, every year, everything dried in, and it may come into play more at that time. To me, it's just about, you know, slowing it down some, because it is, they're on their road going out of town with the fireworks thing, and bringing them right back in town. So as soon as they start settling, they start shooting. The timeline, I definitely would love to see that, and people really cannot shoot anymore. That would definitely slow down some. But I think more from the police side, and I saw two kids damage their hands this year from fireworks. So, I mean, they're dangerous, they're more powerful than they ever were.
Yes, sir.
They're beating quite loud and quite powerful, so they're definitely an issue. So doing something, we got to do something on that.
So you got any more questions for Chief?
Thank you, I'm just going to go. Okay. Thank you. That's what my main concern is, is the safety of the children.
Yes.
In the neighborhood in Ward, Ford, we have, we have to call the police officer several times. They have little kids out there popping fireworks and enjoying themselves, and we got drive-by shootings and everything coming back there with artillery shells. And it's been going on for a couple of years over in Ward, Ford. And I have my own kids that out shoot fireworks, and here come an unknown car. They on Facebook saying, let's go to war. They come in, and Ward, Ford, they come out like football stadium, like Christians area, like high school, and we have a problem in our neighborhood. Our children have to go in after dark because here comes adult kids, high school kids, coming out with artillery shells. They shot one up under my carport, they shot one up under my truck, they shot one in the , up under one's carport, bust up one out. You know, and how on Westmore and the Berrywood, you know, in that area, we have very, very big concern. We have elderly people that, when it get dark, they run in the house. Now, my Fourth of July is ruined because we have people that are not going to be responsible for. Do I want to take away from everybody that is responsible? I do not. But I do want some more responsibility that people have to take action for, because my kids, my kids are grown, and we're just out there enjoying ourselves like everybody else in our neighborhood. Now, we have these, these people that don't stay in our neighborhood, that's just the problem. They don't stay in our neighborhood, and they come by in their cars, just a drive-by shooting, shooting artillery shells. So if that artillery shell doesn't make it out of the car and blow up inside the car and goes off, because it's causing damage to them also. I love the fireworks, and I love the fun of it, but, you know, I think something needs to be done. I hope this could help the situation, and it's been going on for a few years, and it is getting worse and worse, when you see twenty guys with backpacks on running across your neighborhood, in my backyard, in my neighbor's backyard, little kids got to go in the house. So that's one of my concerns.
Yes, and then I've heard, and I've heard some social media posts about this, to why this is illegal in Brownsville, but there are reasons why, but we need to revisit this issue. So that's what we're doing tonight. This is, something that can be changed, it's something we can vote up or down, but we have now, it's not working. I don't, any questions, comments from the other, all of them?
Yeah, and I think the goal would be to make something work better.
Yes.
And I agree. I'm not a hundred percent positive this will work better, but, you know, I...
Right, right, right. I, I agree. I mean, I think with Chief Evans, and we thank you for doing the research and seeing what other policies we've done about putting some parameters involved, because people are doing it anyway. It's a tough issue, but when we start to my safety, our community is the issue we need to address. You can't just ignore it. So here we are, we have ordinance on the first reading, by the way. As with all ordinances in the city of Brownsville, requires two readings. So that our next city council, whether it particularly this passes tonight, we have a public hearing. When the public will be come forward, and we'll hear from them about what they feel that we should do for the best of our community. So this time, we do have a motion, I mean, a ordinance on the floor, the motion to, in a second. So at this time, do you want to go for all a couple? Or you have other comments?
I think we have a motion to the chair.
Yes. Yes, on the first reading. Yes.
I'm ready. Put the firework?
Yes, yes.
It's a discussion, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so we still have...
We still have a discussion.
So what about, what about insurance threats, do we know?
That's a good question.
And I think, I've always heard in the past that it possibly had some effect on home insurance threats, on firework policy, and that's, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but...
It's a good question. Do you have any other questions, anything else we need to do some research on? On the, on the, is there parts that you do like, parts you don't like? Do you, you know, where's your comfort zone? I mean, not just you, but all of them, where, you know, where are we coming?
One thing we're going to have to do, the office can do it all, and you thought for children, we've got, by the way, we should pay them, we're paying them, it's a parent problem, it's a child's problem.
I agree. So if we, if, if we, if we, if we pass this tonight, we will have opportunity to go to a second reading. And I've had some people be upset with me, because as you did tonight, I second the most of the discussion when it came to second reading, I voted it down, because more, I heard from more people, and I know concerns, and people said, we changed vote. No, I didn't. You get to vote individually, every meeting, based on the information you have. So this doesn't seal the deal if we approve it tonight.
No, it's going to help, because this, this year, I got so much to come up with, I hate it, but I had to call the chief of police and ask him if he's free going on robbery shit. And he needs to go, and he'll come to something. The man, he called me, he called me back, he said, he's a penmanship, and he told me that, and I owe him for it, but by the way, Steve, they talked, so that's what I'm telling you, I have to work for the police department and the parents.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, can I say something about that?
Yes, sir.
Now, we did put that on on social media, we set a time at eleven P M. We had absolutely, you go call it after eleven, other than the kids running through the neighborhood and shooting off the border round. But as a whole, the city of Brownsville got quiet at eleven. After eleven...
No, I think he sent some parents from home to jail, lock them up.
It's hard, it's hard to do if you can't find the parents. That's the hardest part, finding the parents.
Yeah.
Now, the whole totality of the thing, it got quiet, boy.
The parents in the house, what's wrong?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a community responsibility. Like I said, that is following the order, all of it, it follows the parents, it follows the police, it follows the fire department. It's just something that needs to be addressed. What we're doing now is not working.
Hey, so, and we can, we can, you know, one way or the other on this tonight, but on the second reading, is there a public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And that would be, that would be beneficial, but I would also, if we could just find out if there's any impact on, on home insurance, or any really second, third, or effects that we need to talk about. You know, I know a lot of these cities have probably done, you know, passage ordinances, but, you know, do they regret it now or not? I don't know. You know what I mean?
Okay, I'm making notes.
So if we just get a little more information, I think that, that would be great, but I keep...
I recommend next year, lead up to, you know, the fourth, you know, all the time, meeting in our ward and discuss this, because that's a...
Good idea. Good idea. And we just give a public notice about what the guidelines are, and it's a safety issue. All right, seem to be up a motion in the second, and we have proper discussion. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. All in favor of passing ordinance number one zero zero four on the first reading, let it know by the sign of "aye." Those, all those opposed, next. Okay? We, the ayes have it on the first reading. We move to the second reading with a proper public notice. Thank you for the discussion and input. All right, next on our agenda is ordinance number one zero zero five on the first reading, which will require a second reading, as of all ordinances for the city of Brownsville, which will be inclusive of a public hearing. Ordinance number one zero zero five is an order to increase the court costs and let the local litigation tax, which this does increase our court costs from, I think, how much is it currently?
One thirty.
One thirty, I was going to say one thirty-five. One thirty to two hundred dollars per case. This is a recommendation that came across our desk, this is a decision that had to be made by then, all of them. This is not something I would ever do or could do on an individual basis. So I, I could go either way. I, I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I don't know, when was the last time we had a raise in our, you know, how long, man? We can find out, that's a question. We have, we can find out how long since we had any type of increase. I know this, you know, falls a little less than with the county, court costs are, I can't remember off the top of my head what they are, but...
Two forty-two.
Two forty-two.
Depending on citation.
Depending on citation. So I'll look and see when was the last time we had this increase. Lieutenant Black, Chief Evans, do y'all have an input about this? They just, I mean, you talked to Judge Haywood.
Probably Judge Haywood, but...
All right, good answer. Good answer. All right, okay, so we have, once again, we have an ordinance that, on the first reading, it's a recommendation to increase the court costs to two hundred dollars per case. We're going to check and see when was the last time we had an increase, and it's currently at a hundred and thirty dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number one zero zero five? Been moved. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second on ordinance number one zero zero five on the first reading?
Well, look, if, if I thought that would help, I think it almost ends up like that or prison. I'm thinking, I think you take somebody that's going three miles over the speed limit, and they get a two hundred dollar fine, you catch somebody going twenty miles over the speed limit, and they get a two hundred dollar court cost. Same court cost is the same. Or if they pull somebody over pretending windows, they get a two hundred dollar fine. I, I think that's, and then, and then if they, and if they know how the money to pay them, they don't pay, then they revoke their driver's license, they catch them driving again, and then they end up in jail, not working, not paying child support, not doing the things that they need to do. That's a reason I don't support that. I think, I think we increase the fine.
Increase the fine, not the court cost.
That's right.
All right, we do have, we have a motion on the floor, I'm calling for, last call on the second, the ordinance number one zero zero five on the first reading. Do I hear a second? I got a motion, I just need a second. We'll call for a vote. Okay, we have a second. All right, so now we have a second. So now we, been moved and passed the second on ordinance number one zero zero five on the first reading. I think we already had some discussion, any other discussion, comments, or questions? The ones I have, when's the last time we increased the court cost? And we know what the county's court cost is, too. And that's been a recommendation, maybe look at the fine, increasing the fines. This is a discussion we have with Judge Haywood. All right, so here we are. We have ordinance number one zero zero five on this first reading. We have a motion and a second. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. All in favor, let it know by the sign of "aye." We're called for, roll a couple. Alden Pugh. Alden Bishop. Alden Woneman. Alden Tegel. Okay. Called for the vote in the ordinance number one zero zero four. Next on our agenda, we have a resolution, which on the cross, one, resolutions are more like guidelines, ordinance that go on laws of the city. So we're next thing on our agenda, resolutions. One, the, the first resolution we have is number one, zero, four, seven, it's a resolution, amended resolution eight, seven, five. It's an employee, inter, email, internet, and social media users. This is more not just a cover of intellectual properties or TikTok type video, but just being careful, we see so many viruses being downloaded into our system, um, and that's our cycle protection, is our number one defense along with our police department and fire department. Um, Ms. Bats, I know it's a recommendation from the I T department, do you, uh, have any comments or, or, an explanation as to what this really, the meat of this, uh, resolution?
I, I think the concern was, um, bringing outside the virus into, and to see all, or local, and our government, confusing who's enough, and they might carry the vi, uh, viruses or whatever, so that was the big concern about now, allowing the virus to.
Okay. This, this is an amendment to all, our social media internet policies as it exists.
I, I make a motion to, uh, pass resolution one, zero, four, seven.
I hear a motion, do I hear a second? Been moved and popped a second, all right, any questions, concerns? Okay, here none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. Okay, resolution ten, zero, four, seven passes. All right, resolution, um, number ten, forty-eight, Ms. Bats, this is, um, coming from the H R department, uh, this is some change in the language that's required, we're adapting now, we, we changed some things in our employee pa, uh, handbook, uh, but we create the whole handbook to begin with, and then we kept following along with state guidelines. These are federal guidelines, as we continue to apply for more grants on a federal level, uh, this is the language that's required. If you, peruse through your packet there, you see the changes in red, um, Ms. Bats, do you have any, of course, I mean, comments, I'm sorry.
Um, no, Ms. Bats, uh, what you said, after, um, I think, mu, last month or month before, we had state guidelines that we had to, I feel to, now we have federal guidelines, uh, uh, going along with this, um, this policy to ensure that we are, um, following the rules and regulations with the federal guidelines for the grant purposes that we do apply for. So the items on the red are the things that they are asking us to include in this policy, in order to, they, when I see those things, when they do apply to other grants.
Okay. Any other questions, Claire? Okay, at this time I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution number ten, four, ten, ten, forty-eight. Do I hear a motion? Motion, do I hear a second? Been moved and popped a second, are there any questions, concerns, or input? Here none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. Eyes count. Um, resolution number ten, forty-nine, this is something we've been working on, and you're seeing, uh, our resolution number ten, forty-nine, and ten, fifty, we were waiting till we got all the price quotes, um, to purchase these vehicles, um, to make the request to purchase vehicles, all right, ten, forty-nine, is to purchase four F one fifty-four trucks and one F six hundred four truck of the city of Brownsville. The F one fifties will be on a ti, ten week delay to get the price that we've been quoting, that's forty-one thousand nine eighty for each one. Uh, those go to solid waste, short wheelbase trucks, this is a source well contract, uh, supersedes the bid process. Um, we, uh, we reached out to Ford and Interstate, but I reached out to Ford and they were like, uh, the availability is the problem, you know, it's been a delay, um, in the vehicle, so, I got a call from Detroit, and they said, look, this is our fleet manager in your area, this is a problem, this is somebody we know can deliver, so, we got the price quotes, and they presented them to you tonight. Um, four F one fifties, a super crew, which are four, uh, two-wheel drive, uh, then the F six hundred super duty truck, at a cost, with the conversion of the flat, fifty-sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I've shopped around a little bit, and I've seen used vehicles, uh, on this level, ten thousand dollars more, so, we're comfortable with the price and what's presented. These, of course, um, the F one fifties become from solid waste, uh, the six hundred become from, uh, the general fund, from, from, uh, street department and public works. So, at this time I'd like to approve resolution number ten, forty-nine, the purchase of these vehicles, do I hear a motion? Motion, do I hear a second? Been moved and second, any questions, concerns? Yes, sir.
Just a question, so, so these four F one fifty super crew?
Yes, sir.
Are, are they, are they short wheelbases?
They, they got six-foot bed on, they're four. I have to get.
So they are, 'cause I know the problem they have, they're running those containers, if they're running the side, they're in one of those trucks, 'cause they, you know, they don't back up very.
Yeah, so, uh, all nothing they did, they reduced the, the side number of the, the containers on the train from three to two, so that when they turned, you're right, if you look at the solid waste vehicles, they've one got that inside.
Uh, so were these in the budget?
Yes, yes, these, these, these were in the budget, the, the F one fifties were the super duty vehicles, not. We came up to, we had to decommission a vehicle that was used to pull the equipment because of a safety issue, we, uh, you put on the brakes, you can't turn the steering wheel. So, we, you know, surprise, surprise, so we, I, I heard, you know, we a complaint from every department, but when it gets to be a safety issue, you decommission a vehicle, you can't afford to lock it.
So what money would that super duty truck come out of?
Um, dispatch book, the super duty truck. Fun bounce, fun bounce. The, and the F one fifties, I'd like to say in solid waste, and they're, they're in the question. Y'all have any other questions? Okay, at this time I'd like to call for a vote, I like, uh, all in favor of resolution number ten, forty-nine, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. Okay. Next, we, as, this is a separate, uh, resolution ten, fifty, this is, uh, also in discussion with, with, with the Ford dealership, the fleet manager, they had, he was lucky, I've been there, I've been trying to find that, the transfer vans for a long time, one for, uh, as a passenger van for, for Sonja, he just can't find them, so, he was able to locate one, this is a twenty twenty-three, two fifty, uh, cargo van, rear wheel drive, with a medium roof, for a cost of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. This is for the animal shelter, the animal shelter has one vehicle now, this, we replaced some with used vehicles going along, but, um, these, they have one vehicle that has transmission issues, and they're, sometime won't go in reverse, and sometime it will. The good news is that we, um, we did put this in the budget, um, and that, of course, the animal shelters is joining the fund, it's not a city in the county. All right, um, I'd like to approve resolution ten, fifty.
I'd like to motion.
Motion.
Approve resolution ten, fifty.
All right, do I hear a second? Been moved and popped a second, are there any other questions? Yes, it'd be, it's, it's there in there for the animal shelter.
But it's been transferred, transferred.
It's transferred, yeah, 'cause, I'm gonna tell you something, that animal shelter is, is something else, so we have a lot of rescues, and then all of a sudden you have a whole animal shelter full of animals, and long time to transport, sometimes they have to meet people on the highway, have to walk town, I've seen used a personal vehicle sometimes, um, and this will be the only new vehicle that I can remember us purchasing for the animal shelter since I've been in office for nine years. But we've, we've been working, we're working on the building, we're working on the, and thank you to the volunteers and all the people that work with the animal shelter, it's a, it's a lot of work, and, uh, it's not always pretty. Any other questions, concerns? Here none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. Okay, ten, fifty passes. This has been very engaging, I like this. So, um, now we have a robot permit, it's, it's easy peasy from here, um, the robot permit from Main Street, Mr. Tom Wolf, you come on and tell us a little bit about your, your program, your rights.
Yeah, son.
You're good.
Good evening, uh, Main Street in partnership with, uh, the middle school that's having a five K race, we have this ann, annually, it's called the Tom Cat Challenge, it'll be a five K race, we'll basically do the same exact, uh, course that we always do, uh, I can give you the details on that. So we'll start at the school, run out the back of the school, turn right on Meadow, then left on Key Corner, turn right on Thomas, right on Foster, then left on Nancy, right on Hart, left on Thomas, left on Key Corner, then back right on Meadow, then enter back into the school for about three point one miles, and this will be September the twenty-third, on Saturday at nine A M., and, uh, so we'll have a five K road race, and then also we're going to have a fun run on the school grounds, where we have, uh, slime and, uh, colored powder that we'll throw at people, and, uh, make it fun for the students.
No problems, sir. Do I hear a motion, do I hear a second? Been moved and popped a second, any questions, Mr. Wolf? Here none, sounds like fun, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. You good to go?
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have Mr. Ray Jones from the Bradley Jones Foundation, he has a robot permit, he's asked for it too. Coach Jones, you come on and tell us about what, what you're doing, and tell us about your, uh, the Bradley Jones Foundation, uh, it's nonprofit, the work you're doing, and it's, thank you, coach.
When are we ready on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, the Bradley Jones Foundation, many of y'all that do or do not know, um, I lost my son, uh, in two thousand and eleven to suicide, and in two thousand and fourteen, we developed the Bradley Jones Foundation, Suicide Prevention Foundation, to, um, for the awareness of suicide, and, um, we, um, we're very passionate about this, um, you know, I, um, taught school for many years, and, you know, spent all this time trying to help people and other people's children, and you never think that anything like this can happen to you, well, I did, and, um, and so since then, we've been kind of trying to spread the word. Y'all have heard a lot about the Bradley Jones Foundation, but we do do a lot, we, uh, give a, uh, five hundred dollar scholarship, uh, every year to high school students, we've been doing that since about twenty fourteen, fifteen, we've given about nine to ten away, um, they're going to get away this year, and, um, that's kind of what we do. Uh, the only unfortunate thing that we have here is scheduled for the same day as the middle school five K, September twenty-third, I don't know what all that clash will be. Uh, it will be on the other side of town, and most likely attract a totally different clientele. Um, the clientele that we have will be people pretty much coming from out of town that are passionate about suicide.
Okay, uh, like I said, he's at the same, on the same day, both, both events have their million dollars of liability insurance, um, and of course, the, this will, this will be centered around the farmer's market. Like, like if people want to be a balloon police there before, and they're gonna run, okay? At this time I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this permit, do I hear a motion? Motion, so moved, do I hear a second? Second, been moved and popped a second, any questions, concerns? Here none, just call for a vote, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. Okay. All right, our community development report, Ms. Chris Emman, so if we have a guest with us tonight, you wanna tell us what.
We'd like to move in here, Mr. Aaron Addington from Collier Engineering to give us a note on Anderson Avenue.
Ms. Mayor. Um, my name's Aaron Addington, and I'm with Collier Engineering, I'm the project manager for this project, uh, y'all hired us, uh, last July, we've been working on the T dot environmental document, I was here this time last year, and brief you all what the timeline was. I mentioned that the environmental document process takes about twelve to eighteen months, we got the final bit that we needed from the T dot environmental section, put the final document together, that will be submitted in the next day or two, final approval will be in the next two to three months, and so we're on timeline for what, uh, the expectation is for getting environmental documents done, then we'll move into the design phase, um, long story short, hoping to get this project bid out late spring, under construction, uh, next summer, and that's when the orange cones will appear, and you guys will finally get, uh, Anderson Avenue some repair work done, so, um, we don't see any difficulties with that timeline, um, any questions?
Actually, I know you probably don't have a total, total sax go until you go through the design phase, I mean, but what's that gonna look like?
From the bypass to Free Avenue to East Main Street, and then we're gonna be doing resurfacing the whole way, restriping, signage, the whole, now we're staying within the existing right of way.
Yes.
We're not getting, wherever you see asphalt now, that is where new asphalt will be, um, so we're not going outside the, the existing, uh, footprint, but it will be new asphalt, restriping, new signage, um, including the intersections, and probably the crosswalks as well.
Okay. Any other questions? This is, thank you, uh, this has been a long process, uh, this federal highway safety money is passed, we've to bucket some money, which we're gonna bucket, and we have to allocate over a five-year period, Aaron's always worked on that, so we don't leave a bucket all day.
No, no, Ms. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No action needed, um, anything else you wanna add, Ms. Smith? So last, last month we had, situation this month we have car, all right, community development report we've covered, now we get the financial management report from Ms. Sherbats, Ms. Bats?
Any questions or concerns about the revenue that's been just been mentioned to us? We have just received our final audits, um, I think I gave everyone a copy, um, so the numbers for last fiscal year, I can start finalizing those numbers, we found out of, uh, audits and numbers. So, um, eventually we'll be coming out, hopefully by next month.
Also, also on the agenda tonight, I think we take the, I think we're two separate, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial management report. Do I hear a second? Been moved and popped a second, any questions, concerns? Here none, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. We also have budget amendments for the, for tonight, Ms. Bats?
So tonight we're adding, um, some grants that we, we, since our budget was approved to our current budget. On next morning, four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars that we're adding to the budget, um, since the latest.
Okay, so these grants are as follows, is the Brownsville-Haywood County Fire Department Training Grant, twenty-six thousand dollars, um, the Site Development Grant for twenty twenty-three, for a million dollars. This is a Site Development Grant for our board advantage park, uh, and the School Resource Office Grant for four hundred fifty thousand. Uh, you see the increase and decrease, in, in, in and out on these items, for a total of one million, four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, these are grant funds that's been bringing into the budget. Okay. At this time I'd like to call for a motion to approve the budget amendments that presented, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? All right, any questions, concerns? Thank the Lord for the grants, all right, at this time we'll call for a vote, all in favor, let it know by the sign of eye? Those opposed now. Thank you, Ms. Bats. Uh, my mayor's report. Uh, we, once again, with the Delta Regional Authority, we had an opportunity to meet with some, some people that have been through the Delta Leadership Institute, uh, here in City Hall, we, uh, opened up some of the community leaders, not just in Brownsville-Haywood County, but throughout West Tennessee, we had USDA representative, Mr. Joe Howard, we had the mayor from Galloway, we had the mayor from Somerville, uh, we had the mayor from Whiteville, uh, Joe Barton, myself, and our federal co-chair, Dr. Corey Wiggins, was born in a small rural town in, in Mississippi, uh, was only the fourth federal co-chair in the history of the Delta Regional Authority, you see Ms. Amber, uh, Ms. Holly, uh, Holly Wood, uh, Ms. in, uh, Ms. Sweetlove, who, uh, knew, uh, Dr. Wiggins through their work through the Mississippi, and Ms. Claire Mackler, who's also a D I L I fellow, so, very productive meeting, we gave out information to our small, and of course, Mayor Stubinsky came in, Dr. Stubinsky. Uh, we gave, we, we talked about the opportunities with D I A, to, uh, to see that funding, through the revolving funding, uh, the mayor from Baltimore, uh, Mayor Patitzki, that before we got, but it was good information, just establishing relationships, Dr. Wiggins has dealt with the funding, comes from Delta Regional Authority, wants to push it out the door. Uh, so this is the first in our, what I call in our gateway series, where we bring information to, uh, the people that need it in the community, this is the first of more to come. Uh, CSX railcross, we were talking about the federal highway safety money, this is a project that's been going on for three or four years, uh, got funded, got held up, I was trying to get a hundred percent of funding, direct to a ten percent match, put in the match money, and I know, uh, all the people you've been watching, and Chris, I know you see it, first, first the, the safety arms went into place, and then now we're finishing the T dot part, it's done in two contracts, so now we're finally finishing that project and move on to the next. Um, I had the opportunity from Governor Lee's office to be reported to the state federalist home board, uh, to represent Western Tennessee, not just Brownsville-Haywood County, uh, and there was a very, very heartfelt, very flattering letter that Governor Lee, uh, made to, and, uh, your good friend, General Bank, uh, this is the commissioner of Veterans Affairs, and thanks very highly of you and Colonel Banks that served with you, uh, and it's another testament to our service as veterans to the community, and, um, I'm looking at your input on this, uh, Colonel Bishop, uh, but he, he speaks very highly of you, and it's, it's nice when people from home get a pat on the back and say, hey, you know, he's a good guy. So, you told me the same thing about General Bank, and he speaks highly of you as well, so, um, I've never received a governor or a foreman before from the governor's office under the lead of Minister, um, it was interesting to see, uh, how, just kind of keep an eye on how to make this effort to work, and then see the announcement next day, if you go back to the, the first line. That concludes my mayor's report, thank you, um, and, um, all in favor?
Thank you. I was the first, thank you. I was in a trip car, and supporting, helping me with the back school bag, I gave about a hundred and fifty backpacks, and I could not, and I could not support the people in the community, in the city, they, which stand and help, and, and, and it happens, and a lot of nice things in those bags, I found a lot to take on, because it's not for me for those bags. And, um, uh, T D A, uh, we took a, a report for this month, the T D A is one million, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, one hun, one, one million, four hundred and thirty-nine, one twenty-one point four, and the kind of informant rate was five point five percent, beginning August one, the average resident elected, they, it decreased across the minus zero point five two six zero for a name due to the T D A fuel cost. And national ID is coming up, and I have some highlights next, uh, month, I raised a board meeting, but some of y'all will get, will phone in the mail, feel like to get back to me as soon as possible to let me know exactly how many, you know, the, uh, fight, spots that y'all. to let me know exactly how many, you know, the, uh, site, spots that y'all need to put your camp sites up. So it's gonna be October the third, it's on a Tuesday night, we tried to work it to Friday night, but it just wouldn't work out with the football season coming, so that was the best we could do. But we're trying to have, before we get too cold, and we're trying to, and it's not so hot, so I think it's gonna pick out a perfect time. If you, y'all need to know any information or needing information about the National ID, please contact me.
Thank you, all in one flag.
Oh, by the way, I was riding yesterday in my Porsche, and I see good things coming.
Okay.
Just give up a little bit, just give it a few more weeks, and y'all will really be proud what you're gonna see, but I'm really excited.
Okay, all in the table? Okay, all in Bishop?
Oh, four.
All in p.
Oh, four.
Okay, are there any department reports of, of anything of purpose you need to announce in our departments? Okay, uh, at this time, um, I want to thank y'all for coming, I'd like to entertain a motion with your, do I hear a motion? Motion, do I hear a second? Yep, been motion and second, all in favor, let it know by the sign of I. Thank y'all for coming.